Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the September 8th, 2014 meeting of the Federal Planning Commission. If you would take this time to silence your cellphones. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Hopkins.
Here.
Yes, sir.
Honchul.
Here.
Cook.
Present.
Winston. Bunch.
Noble.
Here.
Selby.
Here.
Autry.
Here.
Okay. First order of business, consent is the consent agenda. Item number one is approval of the minutes from the August 25th, 2014 meeting and the Vacation 14-4816. Commissioners on this item, because there's a public that are here that want to speak to this item, we're going to go ahead and pull that from the agenda.
Well, yeah, we're recommending, we'd recommend that you pull VAR 14-4843 variance at 36 East Sydney from the agenda or in having on the first item of new business if you're comfortable with that.
Need to slide the iPad away and use the paper version. It happened, this happened to me again. Okay, so I'm sorry, correction, variance 14-4843. Pull that from the agenda, right?
From the consent agenda.
From the consent agenda, okay. So, motion to approve?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Honchul.
Make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Honchul and second by Commissioner Cook. Mr. Garner.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Honchul.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'd like to go ahead and hear that item now, either?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so I guess our first item of business will be variance 14-4843, submitted by Taylor Wood for property located at 36 East Sydney Street. The property is zone RMF 24 residential, single-family, 24 units per acre and contains approximately .17 acres. Request is for variances of the urban design standards for garage location, curb cut and maximum driveway width requirements. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The property is located north of Sydney Street and contains two really small lots, actually, in RMF 24 zoning district. These are the last two remaining unbuilt lots in the neighborhood and on the street. Property contains a significant number of easements and utility easement, easements that have constrained the site somewhat. This item has been heard before the Board of Adjustments for some zoning variances and those were approved. However, there are a couple of ordinances that are your purview now that bring us to the Planning Commission. The applicant is proposing to construct a new duplex unit similar to all of those within the existing neighborhood. The following variances are required in order to do that. We no longer, for instance, require or allow garages to be set forward of the front door. It doesn't meet our urban design standards, urban residential design standards. All of the houses on the street are built in that way. And the second request is for variance of the maximum driveway width. Maximum driveway width allowed for two-family dwellings, 24 feet. The proposed drive is 49 feet in this case. Staff finds, staff finds that, oh, excuse me, there's a third request and this one is allowing, would allow a driveway separation variance. The proposed driveway is approximately 33 feet from adjacent driveway to the east and 36 from the nearest one on the west. So, there are, in fact, three separate variances. And would like to point out that the neighborhood has a series of design covenants, the POA does. They're very active. A number of the property owners are here tonight. And among those, design requirements are that a property have a two-car garage. So, a two-car garage is actually, it's not a city ordinance, but it is required by the covenant. So, it's not as if they can just leave that out of the, of the design. And there are other POA requirements too, which got us through the Board, got us into the Board of Adjustments, having to do with items that aren't relevant to you. So, staff has found that this is a unique situation with the subject property being the one remaining piece of land on the street that has otherwise been fully built out with duplexes. Those were approved and completed prior to our current development regulations. It's also a unique situation. This property is subject to these neighborhood design covenants that do conflict directly in some cases with city design standards. And as I noted, the active neighborhood association has really been concerned and we've been involved with them quite a bit, working this through, and the applicant has worked carefully with the, inconsistently with the POA to find a solution. Staff does find that all the homes on the street have garages. They all protrude from the front facade and that in this case, strict adherence to that urban residential design standard would not be appropriate nor would it be compatible with these adjacent properties. And would create, you know, a unique condition. It would be the one, the one unit or the one home on the, on the street that would not fit in with the rest. Also, you know, as these subject lots are the narrowest on the street and they, they contain larger easements than other lots that are nearby, we feel like making this development fit to the, to our codes in this case would be unfeasible. The driveway and the curb cut variances would, in our opinion, not create any traffic hazard on this local and dead-end street. There's very little traffic on the street. So, in order to, in order to grant this variance and variance of these types, the Planning Commission must determine that compliance with the regulation would create an undue hardship. In this case, staff believes that, that there is reason for that. So, we're recommending, in favor of all three of these variance requests, with some conditions of approval. Number one, a Planning Commission determination of variance for the urban residential design standard, which allows a garage to protrude, allow, which would allow a garage to protrude from the, from the principal facade. Number two, Planning Commission determination of variance of the maximum driveway width requirement, allowing a drive of up to 49 feet in width. And number three, determination of variance of the driveway separation requiring, requirement allowing the driveway as proposed to be within 33 feet of adjacent drive to the east and 36 of the adjacent drive to the west. I'm happy to answer questions, should you have any.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant present? Okay, if you will, come up here and state your name and if there's anything you'd like to add, go ahead and do that, sir.
My name is Taylor Wood and Lynn did a really good job stating what we're asking. I've been talking with him and Andrew Garner and we worked with them to get the Board of Adjustment variance, which was required to meet the covenants, which is also required to build on this site. And so, after we got that, we talked with them about getting this planning adjustment as well. And that's just the next step of what anyone will need to do to build on this lot. We're not asking anything that's above and beyond. These are just, as he said, site restrictions for the site and if we don't get this variance then we really can't build on this. So, I feel like you did a really good job stating everything.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak to this item? If you will, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Ruth Cahoon and I'm co-president of our North Heights Property Owners Association. And we have been discussing during the summer with Taylor Wood and Mr. Ginger, the adherence to our restrictive covenants. And this is just one thing in the latest design plan that is being addressed. And we, we do want to adhere to our covenants and I know you all aren't concerned with our covenants in the POA, but we very much want to see the property resemble the other homes that are in the development that were started back in the middle 1990s. So, we don't want any funny-looking building in there that doesn't blend in with the existing structures. And we do have other things that as the, if this is approved, as the construction goes forward, that we will continue to meet with Mr. Ginger and Mr. Wood to see that the other things that we're concerned with are adhered to, like the minimum square footage, and I'm nervous, so I've forgotten some other things, the gutters and a eve overhang and the medians and all those things that we'll continue to meet with them if you approve this. And those things won't have to come before your board. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any others that would like to speak to this item? Seeing them, we'll bring it back to the Commissioner. Commissioners. You were late.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve, we ready for this?
We are.
Move to approve variance 14-4843 for Ginger with the three conditions of approval.
Second. Okay. We have a motion to approve, Commissioner Winston, second by Commissioner Cook. Mr. Garner?
Hopkins.
Yes.
Chester.
Yes.
Honchul.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Winston.
Yes.
Bunch.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Autry.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, first item of new business is administrative item 14-4841, submitted by Becky Stewart, property located at 210 South Crossover Road. The property is zone RSF 4 residential, single-family, four units per acre and contains approximately 4.6 acres. The request is to amend conditional use permit 13-4390 to allow extended hours of operation. And Mr. Fulter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a small, single-family home on Crossover Road, just north of Huntsville Road. The Planning Commission approved a conditional use in 2013 for this. The discussion at the time was they were looking for a permanent facility. This is a substation of EMS. Their main facility is down on South School Avenue and this is going to be kind of a substation to get them further to the east side of their area that they try to serve, away from more of a central, south location in Fayetteville. And so, they've requested a one-year approval or they've been granted a one-year approval based on staff's recommendation because it was intended to be short-term. Their hours were 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. It's two employees, one ambulance, pretty quiet operation. We had some concerns when they initially came to us last year that this is going to be a full-on ambulance facility and we had some concerns because this is a predominantly residential area, even though it is a long crossover road. To our knowledge, there hadn't been any complaints about this. And we did have the applicants put out, public notice, they put out a sign and sent out public notification to the neighbors. So, if there is anybody that's had concerns over the past year, hopefully they would show up tonight and speak to that. They came back to us with a request to extend the one-year permit, an undetermined amount of time. I think they felt comfortable using this location that served them well. They didn't find another location to move to in a permanent manner, so I think they're looking to make this their permanent location. So, beyond removing the one-year timeframe that was put on them in 2013, they also want to make this a 24-hour facility, so it will operate 24 hours a day. It'll still remain one ambulance, two employees. So, I think the visual impact and the number of vehicles, vehicle trips from this property will remain the same throughout the hours of operation that will change, which could create some, some problems in a predominantly residential area if you have sirens going off in the middle of the night often. That's really our own only remaining concern. And so, while they had a one-year permit last year and it seems to have worked out very well, now that we're changing the hours of operation to 24 hours a day, we felt it would be appropriate to allow that to happen, to recommend that to happen, but to put another one-year term on this to see if it's going to create a problem again because it's predominantly residential properties around this. So, we are recommending approval of the extension without the, beyond this one-year kind of review period to see how the 24-hour operation works. And then we'll come back to the Planning Commission and hopefully if everything's going fine, they still want to operate there, that they could extend that approval indefinitely, at least further into the future than year by years it's gone so far. We're recommending approval with four conditions. It'll be a 24-hour-a-day facility. It will be limited to one ambulance and two onsite employees, as it was for last year. Commercial signage should be prohibited and exterior changes to the house should not be permitted without first reviewing by planning staff or the Planning Commission, depending on the extent of the change. Up to this point, they haven't done anything on the property, so I don't feel that that's an issue with that condition. And then, of course, one year from the date of this approval, they have to come back to the Planning Commission to review the hours of operation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? If you will, ma'am, step up and give us your name and anything that you might want to add to this staff's report.
My name is Becky Stewart, chief with Central EMS. And Mr. Fulter covered everything quite clearly. The only thing we ask is the 24-hour operation. It's been very quiet. In fact, we've had a lot of compliments and people in the area thanking us for being there.
All right, thank you very much. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak to this item? Seeing them, we'll bring it back to the Commissioner. Commissioners, Commissioner Honchul.
Ms. Stewart, if you could. The only question that I have as far as when you get a call, is it, when you go outside, do you turn the sirens on immediately when you get in the truck or is that something that you can delay until you get into the road? I mean, does that make sense?
It sure does. And by law, they have to turn the lights and siren on at the same time. And all it does is ask for permission to get into traffic or ask for the right-of-way. And for the most part, the guys will be cognizant of the neighborhoods. And even when we're going into a neighborhood, lights and siren to make sure that we don't wake everybody up, they'll, they'll shut them down then too, so.
Well, that was the only thing because it's, you only have the one neighbor basically immediately to the south.
Yes.
Have they ever had any concerns or comments as far as noise or anything like?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Because that was the only thing is that I know that road's pretty desolate at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning.
Oh, and if, if there's no traffic, they'll turn their lights on and, and probably not make a lot of noise.
Okay, that was the only question that I, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Cook.
I guess if nobody else has any other comments, I'd agree with staff wholeheartedly, I think. If we had the 24 hours, that we should have them come back one year and make sure it doesn't create any hardships with anybody. So, I'm going to move to approve ADM 14-4841 with the four conditions of approval.
Second. All right, we have motion to approve by Commissioner Cook and a second by Commissioner Autry. Mr. Garner.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Honchul.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Winston.
Yes.
Bunch.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Autry.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is preliminary plat, 14-4784 submitted by Crafton Toll, property located on West Alberta Street. The property is zone RSF 8 residential, single-family, eight units per acre and contains approximately 10.22 acres. The request is a 45-lot, single-family subdivision. Mr. Fulter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is 10 acres. It's adjacent to the city of Fayetteville on the east or to your right. To the left is the city of Farmington. The kind of curved street that you see there was not fully completed. They cut in the street and put in a water line back when the original code development was approved and started construction. So, the development immediately to your right is code phase one that has been completed, final plat, and there are construction homes in there currently. Because this phase was never built, they've come back forward with a new preliminary plat and it originally started with the same concept along that curved linear street. As you can see though, when you look at your plat, that's been redesigned. They've come back with a more traditional kind of block layout with their streets extending the street north and south and then created an internal block as well. This is under the RSF 4, or RSF 8 zoning that they received, city council approval of earlier this year from the expired PZD. It's a 45-lot, single-family subdivision. Pretty straightforward all in all. There's really no connectivity to be provided beyond to the north and to the south. East and west are existing subdivisions, so there's nowhere to connect. They've provided no connections in those directions and we support that. The only issue, as we discussed, discussed at the subdivision committee meeting was the determination of a variance for lots 1 through 6. Those are the lots directly fronting Alberta Street. They were able to work around the double-frontage lots, so we do appreciate the applicants working that out in their original design. So, they've got lots fronting the internal street and lots fronting the external street, Alberta, which is a collector's street. The only issue with that is under the code, it states that lots that have frontage on a collector's street or higher should have shared driveways of at least two, two lots sharing a driveway. And so, they've shown that concept here and they've continued to discuss that with staff between subdivision committee and the Planning Commission meeting. The letter I handed to you from a traffic engineer that they had take a look at this for them has provided some feedback, trying to support their request not to have shared driveways. I think at subdivision committee, they had brought up some concerns with just the usability, the salability, functionality of their lots. And some of those do make sense to staff as well as the letter that were provided by their traffic engineer. We can understand some of the points they're making. It's six driveways as opposed to three. It's a very small change. We understand that. Alberta, though it's a collector's street designation, has very low traffic volumes today and we understand that as well. I think our point is that we're looking further down the road because if you look at Alberta, the classified as a collector's street today probably doesn't make a lot of sense either. It doesn't have a lot of heavy traffic volumes. It serves the subdivisions that were built out by Roush Coleman to the east and to the west of the subdivisions in Farmington, but there is a potential for greater traffic in the future. It has the potential to extend further to the east to undeveloped property. There's about a 40-acre tract to the east and then to the west, though we don't show it on our map. If it were to be extended through the city of Farmington, you're looking at several hundred acres of undeveloped property. So, it could become a, an important east-west connection since it's just north of MLK 62 heading west would be a good alternative. So, there's a potential for higher volumes in the future, certainly to some degree in the potential for conflicts if you have lots of individual driveways. And so, that's really our standpoint is there is a potential there. The code states that you should have shared driveways, at least between two residences, so we feel it is appropriate to stick with that recommendation in that, in this case. So, beyond that, that's the only, I think, point of contention or item to discuss. We're recommending approval of the project overall. There is a variance to allow rollover curb. That's pretty standard in the subdivisions that they've built out in the, in the past. That just allows them to pour the driveways flush with the curb. They don't have to go in and cut every curb for every driveway, for every house that's being constructed. We're fine with that. Engineering's looked at it as really a drainage item as well. We have the six-inch standard and they're fine with the drainage calculations they've provided, so the four-inch is supported by staff in this case. No recommendation on connectivity. We support the project as designed. That's item number two. Then item three would be the variance to either allow six individual curb cuts or some form of shared curb cuts there along lots 1 through 6 on Alberta Street. Lots 7 through 45 under condition four shall be limited to Springfield Drive only, so they'll connect into the interior street versus Alberta. And then the only street improvement is beyond the interiors to construct a five-foot sidewalk along Alberta Street from the old subdivision to the east onto the west end of the city of Farmington. Beyond that, a couple of standard conditions of approval. If you have any questions, just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fulter. Is the applicant present? If you would, sir, give us your name and anything you might want to add.
Stephen Lear with Roush Coleman Homes. When we, when we first heard about the, the shared driveways, we, we understood the idea of the access management policy and so forth, but, and then I went, we went back and talked to our builder about what we're going to have to do. In phase one, we've got some shared driveways and there's been a, we get an influx of complaints constantly, both to the POA and to our office, as a result of either people blocking the driveways and they can't work together and people can't get along. Same thing with people wanting to buy the home, they can't, their kids, they say their kids can't play in the driveway because they're going to back out. So, those were some of the hardships we looked at. So, given the scenario, we asked a traffic engineer to come in and evaluate this specific scenario. And, and under his review, he said, you know, the code states that when necessary, curb cuts along the collector's street shall be shared. In his particular opinion, going from three to six didn't constitute a necessary condition. And he also further stated that there, he wouldn't, it would not create or compound a dangerous traffic condition. So, we felt that given, given the issues we've had and we've had a, had a traffic engineer evaluate the specific scenario, even, even accounting for the fact that the higher volume of traffic, which he, he goes over in here, that, that in his opinion, that, like I say, it would not create a, a dangerous traffic situation. So, we just appreciate your consideration of the variance.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is there any member of the public that would like to speak to this item? Seeing them, we'll bring it back to the Commission, Commissioners.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Winston.
Well, I just wanted to point out that from the, the letter from the traffic engineer, it does state that in his opinion, traffic volumes would be on the low end of the scale from 2,000 to 7,000. And I would say that the low end is somewhere under 4,000. And that's, that's, that puts it in the category of, of being a collector's street. And also on the, on the comment about necessary, I think necessary in this case refers to an inability to access the property from a lower classification street, which depending on how this is designed, it, it could be accessed with a, a central alley, back alley type situation, which we prefer to see anyway. And so, I'm still inclined towards sticking with our, our ordinance in this case because the driveways are forever. And three more, well, it's three more, but then the property to the south could also develop and, and once you, once you start down that road, it's real hard to back up.
No penalty, right?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Honchul.
Question I have is for staff. What's, what's the maximum driveway width that you can have on a single-family home?
It would be, depends on the lot width. 24 feet is typically the maximum. It drops down to 20 feet, I believe, for the width they have.
For one single lot?
Yes.
So, what we're, what we're, what we are requesting is 25-foot maximum width to be shared?
We didn't put a maximum on there, but it would be a maximum, because it would be a shared, it'd be a 24-foot driveway would be the maximum if they shared.
Is there any, is there any way that they could design those shared driveways to where they could bump them out a little bit wider and put some kind of median between the, between the two to, to give them distinct separation between the two houses, something like that, something along those lines? Something like that, would that be possible?
It could probably, with a, with an individual curb cut of 24 feet and then maybe begin to kind of widen them away from each other and put a green space down there to serve separate garages, there's some, some.
Well, that's, that's what I mean. I didn't know if there's any design flexibility, design-wise, to, to maybe alleviate some of the complaint problems between, you know, the two separate residents, you know, if, if that were the case, you know.
Yeah, I think, I think they could create something other than one continuous driveway. It's really going to depend on how they lay out the lots and how they want each property to function. Really, the restriction is at the curb line where they cut it, that's 24 feet. How they maneuver it inside the property line is up to them.
Okay, but that is the max, is 24 at, at the curb?
Yes, sir.
Okay. For the applicant, if you don't mind. Is something like that, something that you would be receptive to?
Sure. No, that, I mean, if, if we could, if we could, you know, like I say, if we can, even if we could go a little bit wider to help, to help a little bit of that and then create that distinction, that might be a better alternative.
Well, because that's, I agree with Commissioner Winston as far as trying to maintain the ordinance of the minimum. And, and I hate to do that to a project because I know nothing gets cheaper as you kind of drag this thing out.
Right.
But if you guys could kind of go back to the drawing board and maybe try to, you know, reconfigure the driveways to where it would be something that the city could be comfortable with and that, that you guys would be comfortable with also, I think that might be a route to go.
And you know, it's, you know, we'll, we'll make it work either way. I mean, you know, it's just one of the, we just, we want to give us the best chance at, at doing business, doing business in Fayetteville, so, and selling houses and so forth, so. But, I mean, we'll, if shared driveways is it, then it's it. But, like I say, we're just wanting to give the best fight and chance at it.
Okay. I'll listen to the comments, Commissioners. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Let me, I want to clarify something. I think that, I want to make sure I understand it and make sure everybody else understands it. Mr. Foulter, are you saying that the only thing the city regulates is the curb cut width?
Yes.
So basically, once they get past that curb cut, they could make it into two driveways and there's nothing the city would particularly have to say about it. It's really a shared access that they're concerned about.
That's right.
So there's no need to go back to design, I don't think, at that point. That's, I was just making sure of that. So they can do what, they could even make them 24 feet wide each after that point if they want.
Yeah, however they can make it work, it's, we're regulating the curb cut and the right of way.
Okay, that's all I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Winston.
I just wanted to say if we stick by our ordinances, creativity will come out of them and they'll come up with solution. Somebody will improve on that solution. We'll get, you know, a kind of a solution that people can use around the city.
Do you have a motion on that?
I bet there is.
Okay.
I'll move to deny, to approve PPL fourteen dash four seven eight four. Oh, I have to go back to here, sorry. Okay. Finding in favor of the determination of a variation in the street standards left for a four-inch rollover curb. Finding in favor of the determination regarding street connectivity, but not allowing the individual curb cuts for lots one through six and the other 12 conditions of approval.
Okay. All right. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Winston and a second by Commissioner Cook. Mr. Garner.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Poncho.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Winston.
Yes.
Bunch.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Autry.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is preliminary plat, preliminary plat fourteen dash forty-eight eighteen. Wait a minute. Okay, here we go. Submitted by McCullough Engineers, property located at Van Ash between Greg and Steel Boulevard. The property is zone C1, neighborhood commercial, contains approximately 9.19 acres. The request is for an eight-lot subdivision. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a preliminary plat that has been approved in the past. It is previously part of a much larger 54, approximately 54-acre plat known as CMN Business Park. The lot in question is approximately 16 acres and, excuse me, that's a lot next door. The lot is nine acres and is being proposed exactly as it was approved in 2012. The project has not been built. The approval has expired. The original project therefore has to receive preliminary plat approval from the planning commission in order to proceed. This item was forwarded from the subdivision committee with unanimous vote for approval. The applicant is requesting eight lots, eight commercial lots and infrastructure improvements. Those will include 24-foot drive aisle. That would be a private drive, installation of utilities and easements to serve those. This drive aisle will connect to the adjacent existing commercial property to the east. And multi-use trail will be provided along the northern portion of, a connection to the multi-use trail will be provided. That trail crosses the northern area of the site, just across the property line. The applicants will be able to move ahead with their final plat application after they've done the improvements. The, well, staff is recommending approval of this as it was approved in 2012 with the following conditions. Planning commission determination of street improvements. We feel that all the adjacent street improvements have been made. Van Ash is fully improved, curb gutter, drain, et cetera. And we are not recommending anything further except for street lights along that Van Ash frontage according to code, one every 300 feet. The proposed driveway shall be the only drive that serves these lots, just getting one for the eight, so there'll be one curb cut along Van Ash. And that will provide direct access to all the lots and some, a number of other typical standards of, or conditions of approval. I would like to point out condition number nine that does allow the applicant, if they wish, to provide access to the multi-use trail in the future, provided that they give us, they give the city an easement right now that would, that would be movable in the future if, pending the arrangement of development on the site. Right now, they potentially have a client that may take the top two lots and that would be in the area where this connection would occur. So in order not to limit that development in any way or to have them build a trail that would then be removed and rebuilt immediately, we would just request that an access easement, trail easement be platted there that could be adjusted in the future. So with those, with those conditions, we are recommending in favor of this preliminary plat. And I believe that the applicant is aware of all of these conditions in favor of them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Assistant President. Will, sir, step up and give us your name and anything you want to add? And I guess as Mr. Thompson said, you're aware of all the conditions of approval and you're agreeable to those?
Yes, sir. Ryan Gill with McCullough Engineers here representing the owner. I've read all those and we're amenable to all of that. So, yes, sir.
Thank you. We'll let you know if we do. Is there any member of the public who'd like to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Winston.
We're on the subdivision committee for this one and it's pretty straightforward. We've seen it back in 2012. And the only speaking point was about the trail connection and it sounds like staff's worked that out just fine. So I'll move to approve PPL fourteen dash four eight one eight for Twin Creeks Village, Phase Three. Finding in favor of the determination of street improvements as stated in the staff report.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Winston and a second by Commissioner Autry. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Hopkins.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Poncho.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Winston.
Yes.
Bunch.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Autry.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is large-scale development fourteen dash forty-eight seventeen. Submitted by CEI Engineering, property located at 3399 West Black Forest Drive. Property is owned by RPZD Residential Plan and Zoning District and contains approximately 1.35 acres. The request is for a 3,675 square foot restaurant, Freddy's Fast Burgers, and associated parking. Mr. Foulter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Another development out at Forest Hills there on the north side of the neighborhood market along Weddington. One of the outlots, one of the outlots as a part of that development. This is 1.35 acres and the commission probably remembers the conditional use for this project a couple of months ago. That was for additional parking. Really, the big discussion with that was two large trees that exist on the site. It was, that conditional use was approved and recommended by staff with the condition that they preserve in that case, or what was approved was the existing oak tree on the property. They were able to work the development around that existing oak tree and is part of the preservation plan. So we do appreciate the applicant working on that. They're proposing a 3,600 square foot restaurant with parking. All the adjacent streets are improved as part of the Forest Hills project. The only improvements all these lots are making is putting in that internal sidewalk along the private drives, along Black Forest Drive is the rear access to all these properties. I don't think, there was one issue at subdivision committee, which was the location of that five-foot sidewalk. They were placing it very close to the back of curb, which is not consistent with what we've seen on all the adjacent properties and not consistent with our expectations to get the sidewalk away from traffic lanes. So they were able to work through that between subdivision committee and planning commission. Again, we do appreciate that as well. It required them to redesign their bioretention area to serve some of that, to offset the additional parking that they had received approval for. They were able to put the majority of that internal to the site within one, some of their tree islands. So with that, staff has recommended approval of the project. There is planning commission determination under item one for architectural design standards. Those are governed by the Forest Hills PZD that was approved. Those were slightly modified a couple of months ago. We've included those standards and they are meeting the standards that were adopted with that PZD. Item two is a slight variance of an internal drive aisle. It's a four-foot variance for about 50 feet and it's really because of the offset created by their driveway, they're trying to dodge an existing inlet along Black Forest Drive. So they had to shift their driveway slightly over. That offsets the internal driveway and creates a poor traffic flow situation, but with the slight variance, it helps that quite a bit internally. And again, it's a very small area and there's reasons why they're doing it. So we're recommending approval of that small variance under item two. And then item four, just to note that there is an access easement or shared driveway on their west property line. This will hopefully help with the development of the final lot between this property and I believe First Security Bank, two lots over to the west. Few other standard conditions of approval. And if you have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foulter. Assistant President. Again, if you'll give us your name and anything you might want to add, sir.
My name is Nathan Street with CEI Engineering, representing the developer. We've had a chance to look over all the conditions of approval and the comments. We take exception with none of them and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Does any member of the audience like to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Winston.
I just want to send kudos out to the firm that worked with this project. They really found good solutions, made changes quickly and easily, and I think it's a really good project. And I just want to say also, I really like how it approaches the street, having all the tables out front. It's got a really nice atmosphere relationship with the street. I think that's something to be, that we want to see more of. And if you all didn't have anything else to say about our move to approve large-scale development fourteen dash four eight one seven for Freddy's Custard and Steak Burgers.
Second.
If I, was there any findings on that? Finding in favor of architectural design standards and the determination regarding the 28-foot drive aisle.
Maintain your second. Okay. All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Winston and a second by Commissioner Selby. Andrew, would you please call the roll?
Hopkins.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Poncho.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Winston.
Yes.
Bunch.
Yes.
Noble.
Recuse.
Selby.
Yes.
Autry.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is conditional use permit, excuse me, had to make a note there. Conditional use permit fourteen dash forty-eight twenty-two submitted by Bates and Associates for property located at 3263 Skelleran Road. Property is owned by RSF Four, residential single-family, 40 units per acre and contains approximately 1.06 acres. The request is for a tandem lot. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This lot sits behind existing, existing lot already, has a flag of land that moves all the way along the, along the western border and then expands out to a 70-foot street frontage to meet the minimum requirement for a street frontage right now. So this is an existing lot with an existing developed residence. At this time, it does meet all the requirements for the zoning district. It is a conforming lot. The applicant is proposing a property line adjustment that would reduce that front lot frontage from 70 feet, which would be below the minimum square, excuse me, street frontage for RSF Four and would require conditional use then for tandem lot. They're doing this for, in order to, A, just clean up some of the lines, but to move, reduce a situation, I think, and perhaps the applicant can explain it more clearly, where people are maintaining other people's property, where access to water lines is confused and for some other reasons. And as I said, this lot, these lots are already developed and there's no further development allowed, nor is any being proposed at this time. The tandem lots will have access via private drive that will be placed in an access easement. Staff sees no concern, has no concerns with compatibility. These lots are far larger than are required under the zoning code and doesn't see any adverse impact at all to the neighborhood. So we're recommending in favor of this tandem lot conditional use with, with a condition that the residential driveway in the area that is shared between the two residences be placed in an access easement for both property owners to use.
Thank you, sir. Assistant President. If you will, give us your name and anything you may want to add.
My name is Derek Thomas with Bates and Associates, representing Mr. Allen and Mr. McCutcheon, the property owners. Quinn did a good job of, you know, kind of trying to explain everything that's going on. The biggest deal is with the 70-foot that we have currently, that's basically Mr. Allen's front yard. He mows, maintains that piece of property already, so we're just trying to reduce that and give him ownership of that, of that portion. So if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Mr. McCutcheon is also here, one of the property owners. Specific questions for him, so.
Okay, thank you. Any member of the audience like to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Winston.
I always like to see sanity prevail in these kinds of situations. So I'll move to approve conditional use permit fourteen dash four eight two two with the one condition of approval.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Winston and a second by Commissioner Cook.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for the applicant, if I may.
Absolutely.
I was looking at the lot here. How, where are the lot widths proposed on the tandem lot? How wide would that lot be?
You come forward.
Staff's asking.
The frontage is here.
Yeah, staff is asking you, what will be the final dimensions, lot dimension, frontage of the two lots along the street?
20.36 will be the actual lot width for the tandem lot. And it looks like however much is left over from, maybe like 140 or so on the other one?
All right, that's fine. I didn't see any issues. I was just wondering if there was going to be some sort of a lot width variance that may be required, but there will not be.
Okay, all right. All right, we still have a motion to approve by Commissioner Winston and a second by Commissioner Cook. Mr. Garner, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Poncho.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Winston.
Yes.
Bunch.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Autry.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is conditional use permit fourteen dash forty-eight fourteen. Submitted by Jared Kennedy for property located at 2630 East Citizens Drive. The property is owned by C1 Neighborhood Commercial, contains approximately 8.91 acres. The request is for a fitness center in C1 zoning district. Mr. Thompson, you're getting a mall tonight, aren't you?
Well, I've got a few.
All right.
The subject property is located in the Cant Center shopping area. It is zone C1, neighborhood commercial. It's a strip commercial development, approximately nine acres. There's an existing 12,000-foot gym facility. It's been operating in the strip center for many years. Not sure how many, but quite a few. name it Hogwild CrossFit. This would be a gym facility that's not allowed by right within C-one zoning district, but it is allowed with conditional use. So they're here seeking a conditional use that will allow this gym expansion in the strip center. And this calls up an interesting point, which is that recent code changes have removed this use unit from the C-one zoning district. So, effectively, the existing twelve-thousand-square-foot gym facility is also no longer a conforming use, so we'd like to address that as well tonight. The details of the Hogwild CrossFit business, it will be just under eighteen-hundred square feet. Will operate with the exact same hours of the existing Fitness for Less building. It's five to eleven, Monday through Thursday, five to eight on Fridays. Saturday, eight to eight P.M. There is a large amount of parking in the Kent Center. They do share that parking with all of the other businesses, including the neighborhood market there. They anticipate forty to eighty clients a day visiting this gym with four full-time employees. Those will be conditioned, you'll find those with conditions of approval. The business will not be able to expand, therefore, either in hours or in size, without another conditional use, without another hearing from the planning commission. But these are right in line with the existing business and we have, staff hasn't heard any complaints through the years that we're aware of, having to do with Fitness for Less in any way. So we feel that granting this conditional use within the commercial strip center, the kind of place where this should be located without any adverse impact to public interest at all, and we are recommending, therefore, in favor of it, finding that it's compatible with adjacent commercial uses and with the neighborhood in general, with the conditions of approval as stated in the applicant's letter, limiting the hours and size of the facility. And in addition to that, bringing a condition of approval that would allow the, that would bring the existing business, the existing Fitness for Less business, into conformance with C-one. So essentially, it's conditional use for both facilities, the existing and the new.
Just before we move on to that one, just a point of clarification. You said the existing facility is how many feet?
Twelve thousand.
Okay. And the expansion is how many more feet?
Eight, just under eighteen-hundred, seventeen-fifty.
Okay, so we're going to have a total project that we're bringing into compliance of how many feet again?
Well, I'd like to do it separately because they are in two separate, they're not adjacent to each other. They're in two separate sections of the strip center. So, if you'll look at your aerial view, we've kind of highlighted the areas where these businesses are. One of them is quite a bit further down the center than this. So it's a, I think it's a related business. It is an expansion. At the same time, it's got a separate name.
I understand.
Same ownership and they're probably doing slightly different courses and classes.
Okay, great. All right, just wanted to get that cleared up. I was looking, thank you. Okay, is the applicant present? If you will, sir, give us your name and if there's anything you want to add.
Jeremy Kennedy with Lindsay and Associates. I'm the leasing agent and property manager for the shopping center. Everything's pretty straightforward. If you've got any questions, I'll be here to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Does any member of the public like to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
My only question is, why don't we allow, why did we take this out of C-one? Anybody know?
Yeah, when we revised some of our zoning code in the last few years, I believe it was when we included the form-based zoning district, we did some pretty comprehensive zoning changes throughout and we pulled some use units in and out of certain zoning districts we felt were appropriate. Typically, when you see fitness centers, they're, they can be associated with more of a regional use with large amounts of volume of traffic and really high peak hours of people coming in and out of a particular center. So we allowed them by right only in the more regional commercial uses. We put it in use unit four, which is allowed by right in C-two, in urban thoroughfare. And I can't remember one or two others maybe, but we removed it from some of the smaller scale commercial zoning districts, including C-one neighborhood commercial.
You guys are the professionals, I'll take your word for it. However, since this existing one is causing no problems, I don't see how an expansion's going to cause any problem and I'm going to move that we approve CUP fourteen dash four-eight-one-four with staff recommendations of approval. That does both of them, right?
I'll second that. Okay. Any comments?
Just one comment. We talked about it in agenda session, but just a recommendation, staff looks at allowing, putting a use unit back in that might be limited in size to two thousand square feet or three thousand square feet for these boutique-sized fitness centers that might be more appropriate in C-one. Or we might want to be, actually be encouraging having smaller fitness centers spread out throughout the city.
And I would, you know, I've, we've heard that this is not the only type of use we want to start incorporating into more of the neighborhood commercial. We've talked about adding microbreweries as well and even churches are what, you know, churches and some other institutional uses if they're smaller size based on the square footage are certainly appropriate in a neighborhood, we want to encourage them in a neighborhood, so.
I'm glad that staff is finally seeing microbreweries and churches in the same sentence.
Oops. All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Chesser and a second by Commissioner Winston. Mr. Garner.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser?
Yes.
Honcho?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, the next item is conditional use permit fourteen dash forty-eight fifteen submitted by Bates and Associates for property located at twenty-eight oh four Western Martin Luther King Boulevard. The property is owned C-two, thoroughfare commercial, and contains approximately point-four-eight acres. The request is for additional parking. Mr. Fulter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an existing car wash here on MLK. Partner is looking at taking down that existing building, reconstructing the entire site, then we put in a retail store for AT&T. As part of that request, they have one additional parking space that is allowed by code. Based on the type of business, the amount of traffic customers that they have in there as well as the number of employees, it does seem justified based on the information they have provided us. And having been in several of those stores, I certainly understand the demand that they have for parking. And there really is a small amount of parking for this particular building. It is a particularly small site. Staff is recommending in favor of the one additional parking space, subject to our requirements, including the additional two-inch caliper tray and biofiltration area for the additional stormwater that will be created by the one additional parking space and drive aisle area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant present? If you will, sir, give us your name and anything you might want to add.
My name is Evan Niehaus with Bates and Associates. I'm representing the client here for AT&T and I think that Jesse explained it well. We've tried to put in as much low-impact design that is necessary to offset the increased paving, along with some additional landscaping and a couple of features. But if you have any questions, let me know.
So are you agreeable to staff's recommendations? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, does any member of the public like to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
I move that we approve CUP fourteen dash four-eight-one-five, sorry, I skipped items there, with staff recommendations of approval.
Second. Okay. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Chesser and a second by Commissioner Honcho. Mr. Garner.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser?
Yes.
Honcho?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving right along, the conditional use permit forty-eight dash, oop, forty-eight twelve, try this again. Conditional use permit fourteen dash forty-eight twelve submitted by Abby Stewart, property located at forty-one seventy Martin Luther King Boulevard. The property is owned RO Residential Office and contains approximately three-point-four acres. The request is for a chocolate shop in RO zoning district. Mr. Fulter.
Thank you, sir. This is an existing office complex. It was constructed in the RO zoning district. There were some attempts back when that was built, right before it was built to get it to commercial, though it remained in RO. It's generally just an office complex. Planning commission did in two thousand and six approve a conditional use permit to allow a restaurant and pizza place to go in through the two southern tenant spaces on the west side of the building that is along MLK. That pizza business was replaced by another restaurant for the same use unit a couple of years later. That recently closed and so the applicant is looking at operating a chocolate business out of this. This is not a retail storefront. They produce the chocolate here and then it's provided to various locations in the area. It is essentially use unit fifteen. It's, didn't quite fit in a perfect use unit, but we applied use unit fifteen. It's essentially something like a custom bakery. It would be the closest type of business. So, they have a very specific product. They're using the existing space as it exists. It's got the kitchens, got all the supplies that they need, so it's perfect for their business setup. They didn't realize that the property didn't allow their use, it's a different use unit. So unfortunately, they had to come through the conditional use process, but we appreciate them working with us and going through this process. It's a very appropriate change in use. It's somewhere between an office and a restaurant. There is an adjacent property owner to the north that has a private driveway that goes along the west side of this building that has had some complaints in the past about the operation of a restaurant at this property. We had a public notification go out for this. I haven't heard from them, so I'm assuming that they are okay, but maybe they're in the audience, I'm not sure. But I will tell you, in the past, they have had some concerns, but I haven't heard from them in quite a while, so I'm assuming everything is running smoothly out there at this property. We're recommending approval of this change to use unit fifteen. Just to point out again, this is kind of an old condition that the gravel driveway, condition number one, access to the, for deliveries, is restricted to the front of the building. A lot of times, that was part of the problem, is the private driveway back to the home was being used for deliveries because it goes to the back of the businesses. That's their private driveway to get back to their property. And then item two, that the use of these two tenant spaces would be limited to how it was described by the applicant for this chocolate shop, and that's the only two conditions that we have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fulter. Is the applicant present? It's the chocolate lady. If you will give us your name, ma'am, anything you want to add to it.
Sure, my name is Abby Stewart. I'm representing my husband, Preston Stewart, and the other two owners, Charles Davidson and Mark Blanco. I'd just like to share our story with you, or Hello Coco. We began as an idea, a desire to share something good with one another from one side of the world to another. It's in our travels, we have met people who have a passion for their crop, for life, for family, for smiles and good conversation. Our passion for adventure, meeting new people and sharing experiences led to this experiment in crafting fine bean-to-bar chocolate. With our home and heart in northwest Arkansas and the intrinsic vibrancy that I believe is Fayetteville, we thought there could be something to share together. So Hello Coco was formed. We believe in creating shared experiences, finding adventure in the ordinary and handcrafting melt-in-your-mouth, single-origin, small-batch chocolate. You guys have any questions for me?
None at this time, but we'll call you back when we do. Thank you very much, ma'am. Does any member of the public like to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission. Would anybody like to speak about the chocolate?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Winston.
I just wanted to say, these meetings are a really good opportunity to come up, since you have to sit there and wait till it's your turn.
Why not plug?
Talk about your business.
Why not plug?
Plug your business. Come up here and plug your business. I think it's a great thing to do. That's my only comment.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
I just wanted to get clear on one thing. So, a restaurant's allowed, but a chocolate shop's not?
These are allowed by right.
Okay, so there had been a restaurant there before that had a CUP?
Exactly.
Okay, so I think that's perfectly, my waistline will not thank you, or me, for this, but I'm going to move that we approve CUP fourteen dash four-eight-one-two with staff recommendations of approval.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Chesser and a second by Commissioner Selby. Mr. Garner.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser?
Yes.
Honcho?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is conditional use permit fourteen dash forty-eight thirteen submitted by Rachel Bull, property located at eight oh eight Peel Street. The property is owned RSF four residential, single-family, four units per acre and contains approximately point-four-three acres and the request is for a daycare in RSF four zoning district. Mr. Fulter.
Sir, Peel Street, this is just a block south of Township and a lot over from June Way Terrace that connects into Township. There's an existing thirteen-hundred-square-foot home on the property with a two-car garage. Applicant is, or the homeowner's requesting to operate a home childcare, which is a conditional use in residential, single-family districts. Tends to be the location where we see these conditional uses and is in single-family homes. They're requesting up to a maximum of five children that they would take care of during operating hours, which would be approximately seven to six, which is typically a little extra time there if we drop off and pick up before and after work. Really, the only thing unique, in my opinion, about this is that they are going to convert the existing garage, so they'll take out the garage doors and create an enclosed, heated and cooled space, enlarge the house essentially using the garage space, and that will be the dedicated childcare area versus just dedicating a single room or two rooms, as I've seen in the past, at least with these applications. They've included kind of a rough floor plan. We've included some photographs of that area. Seems appropriate. The driveway is more than adequate for two single-family vehicles to serve the existing home and then to allow for pickup and drop off, knowing that not all five parents are going to show up at the same time. There's also room on the street to be able to pull up, meet fire code, pull up there along the curb line and drop off or pick up a child as well. Historically, we've really never had any issue with childcare facilities. We probably see a couple of year in single-family neighborhoods, regardless of the layout or anything else, they've just never created a problem that we've really ever heard of. We've continually been in favor of them as long as the number of children is relatively reasonable, which is around typically seems to be about five kids is about what people request. So, consistent with what we've seen in the past, we are recommending approval of this conditional use. As I stated, the daycare will be limited to five children. The homeowner will be the single employee for this business. The daycare will have to receive all the appropriate permits, if she's going to operate out of the garage, as noted in her application, of course, all the appropriate permits, finish out the space, receive her certificate of occupancy through building safety before opening for operation. It'll be limited to Monday through Friday, seven a.m. to six p.m. Outdoor play equipment associated with this business would be kept in the backyard. Business signage for the daycare will be limited to four square feet and will be limited to a window or the door, something inconspicuous, but to let people know obviously that they're at the right location. And then, condition number eight, this is not an accessory dwelling unit, the way they finished it out or the way they planned to finish it out, we've just made a condition that should in the future they want to make this an accessory dwelling unit, which they could do under our ADU ordinance, they would just need to get to the proper permitting. So it's just a note to the applicant about those requirements. That's all we have, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is the applicant present? If you will, ma'am, stood up and give us your name and anything you might want to Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cook.
It seems that we've done a few of these on my time on planning commission, and the conditions are all about the same on every one of them, and usually we have a neighbor here or two, but we don't tonight, apparently, so, but I'm going to move to approve conditional use permit fourteen dash four eight one three.
Second.
Okay. We have motion to approve by Commissioner Cook and a second by Commissioner Chester. Mr. Garner.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Chester.
Yes.
Montal.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Winston.
Yes.
Bunch.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Autry.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Congratulations, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is conditional use permit fourteen dash forty eight ten. Yeah, okay. Which we're apparently getting last minute information as we speak, right? All right. Hold off the press. All right. Conditional use permit fourteen dash forty eight ten, submitted by Tamara Martin Beege for property located at eighteen eighty-two North Star Road. The property is Zoned RSF one residential, single-family. One unit per acre and contains approximately 1.32 acres. Request is for a change in a non-conforming use to allow a doggy grooming business in an RSF one zoning district. Mr. Thompson, you're the lucky guy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, this information did, did in fact come in after my staff report was complete. There are some more letters, I think, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven or eight in opposition, maybe, and one in favor. Maybe not that many I was counting to. At any rate, I think two of these may be included in your packet already. The remaining ones have very similar comments, so I'm sure you've read those, and the others are similar in their content in general. The subject property is located at the east, at the east of Star Drive. The property is Zoned RSF one and contains one building, approximately acre and a third is the amount of land area. This, this structure was constructed several decades ago, I think, I believe it was around nineteen ninety-two, and has been used for a variety of non-residential uses, including title company, attorney's office, those are the ones I found easily. In fact, I'm not sure this has ever been used as a residence in its history. The building is adjacent to a single-family neighborhood to the north and to the east and south, an eighteen-acre parcel. It's under the same ownership as this property. The request is for approval of a pet grooming business, and only a pet grooming business. These recent uses have been professional and commercial office uses. This is a little bit of a change, but, but also in the same, same vein, significant amount of traffic, particularly for a title company. So we don't find that this neighborhood, this will be incompatible with the neighborhood. We think that it will not cause any significant adverse impact. There are a number of conditions, which I'll read to you, that I think really help any potential issues that may occur. We find this has always been, as I said, it's always been commercial in nature, not typically noticed. The building is over a hundred feet from Star Drive, behind a fence and some, you know, some mature trees. Most people don't know it's there. There are a couple of parking areas, one in front that houses, that will hold twelve automobiles. Certainly adequate parking for a facility like this. It does allow turnaround so that people can pull out onto Star Drive facing forward. So we don't anticipate any traffic or congestion issues with this project either. Certainly nothing more than would occur, would have occurred with the previous uses. The fact is that it is, it can be difficult to introduce non-residential use in a residential district, and there's been noted significant amount of public comment on this, and not all of it in favor. In fact, most, most of it is not in favor. I'm sure we'll hear some, some tonight from neighbors, particularly neighbors that are to the east. That would be in Candle Shoe neighborhood, I believe that's called. And that's where, that's where all my letters came from, incidentally, I believe. We believe this will always be a non-residential business, and we've carefully created conditions of approval. The applicant is aware of them and agrees to them, and we hope that those will eliminate any concerns that the neighbors may have. So we are recommending in favor of this, of this conditional use with the following conditions, finding that it is, in fact, compatible in size, scale, and appearance with the surrounding neighborhood. The first condition of approval is that this, this permit is limited to a dog grooming business. It's not, not to allow animal daycare, kenneling of animals, or any other pet-related or animal-related businesses. The following hours and details apply. The business will be no longer, larger than eighteen hundred and twenty square feet, that's the current size of the building. The hours of operation are limited from eight AM to five thirty PM, Monday through Friday, nothing on weekends. Maintain twelve parking places. They anticipate an area of twelve clients per day and two employees. The planning commission must determine the appropriateness of this use, and we do find that it is, is appropriate and compatible with the neighborhood as a dog grooming business, although that is more intensive than a, than some office uses. I believe that given the limited nature, that this is, this is suitable to the neighborhood. Any enlargement, as I noted, should be prohibited. Any future change in the use shall require planning commission approval, and if they decide that they would like to do doggy daycare or something like that, that will be an unapproved use and will be illegal, and they will have to come back to the planning commission for your, for hearing and your determination of that sort of use. Animals shall be kept inside the building at all times, except for when customers are walking them directly from vehicles to the door. So dogs are not to be playing outside, they're not to be stored outside or, or let loose outside. Animals shall not be kept overnight or otherwise kennels, and we believe that addresses most of the concerns of the neighborhood, and we would certainly not be recommending in favor of a, of a business that would allow any of those things. So I'd be happy to answer questions if you have any.
Okay. Is the applicant present? If you will, ma'am, give us your name and anything you may want to add.
I am Tanya Martin Beege. I'm the owner of Adorable Doggie Doo's. We now have a location on crossover in the shopping center. We're just looking to move locations. We do not have a green area where we can walk dogs to take for potty breaks or anything. We are not a boarding facility. We do not plan on being a boarding facility. I have never had a complaint about noise, smell, where we're located right now. I don't know if you have any questions for me? I don't know what else to tell you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Is there any member of the public like to speak to this item? If you will, come up and give us your name. If you will, keep your comments direct and brief and...
Hi, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Peter Main. I live on Candle Shoe Drive. It's also, in your comments, is Crystal Cove subdivision. We're one street, we have about eighteen homes, and on the map there, it'll be off to the right, directly across the lake. So our, our primary concern, and I'm speaking both as an individual homeowner and also as an officer of the Crystal Cove subdivision property owner association, which has submitted a comment opposed to this application, we are concerned about noise, sound that carries across, it's a fairly large lake, and, and we're, we've had experience with noise carrying across that lake. And so, you know, the applicant and the planning commission staff have assured the neighbors and the public that this is strictly an indoor business, but it is 1.32 acres, and the proposed location provides plenty of room for this eighteen hundred square foot building and outdoor activity. So it sets the building up for, the business up for future expansion for this type of pet grooming business, but then, as noted, possibilities for pet boarding and pet daycare. And we are concerned about that future, as well as possibility of outdoor activities, even though the commission has indicated that those would be restricted. We certainly hope they would be. So we would, my wife and I and the, and our POA have asked that the commission disapprove this application. However, my wife and I are also noting that, looking at the staff report, that if the commission elects to approve the application, we request that it also include a condition to expand notification of any future potential expansion. And, and the reason we ask that is that that's a very small parcel contained within a much larger parcel. And so the notification to adjacent landowners is extremely limited, and as far as visibility or notice within the neighborhood, it's basically your one small red sign. There's no notification to property owner associations in the area, and so we would ask that that be considered for possible notification in the future. And I guess one other question that I have is, is a procedural question, is, and I submitted it to staff and did not receive an answer, and that's whether the application is supposed to be submitted by the property owner. I don't believe the applicant is the owner of the property. We don't know if that's the case or not, so I just raise that for your consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Mary Haney. My husband Roger and I live on Hartford Drive, two oh nine eight North Hartford Drive, which is one block over from Candle Shoe, and we've lived there for fourteen years. We also own a house across the street from this proposed site on Star Road. It's there on the corner of Star Road and Cherokee Drive. We bought that house three years ago for my mother and disabled sister to live in. So I've got a house in two adjoining neighborhoods to this property. When I saw that this person had applied to move to Star Road and that there were noise questions from the neighbors, I obtained a copy of the application. I decided I wanted to find out, you know, what was really going on. I got a copy of the application and reviewed it for myself. I also went by the site and looked around, which I've been by it a million times before, and most people don't even know it's back there because it's so far hidden back in the trees there. But I drove in there for the first time ever and just kind of looked around, and then I stopped by Tanya's current location to visit with her about her intentions and to get correct information for myself, so that I could share that with anybody else that had concerns about it. I have dogs, and I use the services of several groomers in the area. I also train my dogs, and I compete with them in obedience and agility, and so I kind of run in dog circles, so to speak, and I know a lot of the groomers in the area personally, and I've used a lot of them. So I checked on at least eleven groomers in Fayetteville, Springdale, and Tonnentown area to see what their policies and procedures were, and there are a lot more than what I checked on. I just checked on kind of ones I knew and some that I wasn't familiar with. Some of those dog groomers provide boarding and daycare, and some do not. Tanya doesn't provide boarding or daycare, either, either one of those. No dogs are left on her premises overnight or on weekends. In all the grooming places that I checked, all eleven of those, not one leaves dogs outside and runs while they're waiting to be groomed or waiting to be picked up. In every one of those grooming facilities, the dog is taken to a cage. When I drop my dog off at any of those groomers, it is taken directly to a crate indoors in a climate-controlled facility, and then it's kept there, except to go out on a leash, if necessary, to potty. No groomer is going to bathe a dog and groom it, spray it with perfume, tie a bandana around its neck, and put a bow in its hair, and then let it go outside to roll in the dirt. I expect when my dog is finished that it's clean and it's in a crate, ready for me to pick it up. Not one of the grooming places I checked had kennels or runs outside for dogs being groomed. A groomer cannot afford to have a dog escape from one of those outdoor runs or get into a fight with another dog that it may or may not get along with. It's all a very controlled environment. Most of them have a little area of gravel or grass where the dog can be taken on a leash to potty and then returned to their crate, which is done quickly because time is money for a groomer, and they can get on with the next dog. If that dog barks while it's outside for a minute, you know, being walked, it's no worse than any dog that I hear barking every once in a while when I walk my dogs around the block, or kids, or backyard chickens that I hear a lot. I don't see any, I don't see this grooming business as posing any nuisance at all to either of the neighborhoods that my houses are in. And so, you know, the traffic is minimal. I'm used to Star Road all the time. Her appointments, you know, are like every couple of hours where people would drop off, so it's kind of ongoing all day long. It's not one big traffic jam during school hours or anything. So anyway, I would recommend this being approved, and if you have any questions, I would be glad to answer those from a client's point of view.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? If you will step up and give us your name and address, sir. If you will, keep it as brief as you can.
Ricardo Gonzalez. I also live in Candle Shoe area. So as resident of the same area, I also have the same concerns as Mr. Main was saying on not only how it's going to affect our everyday life, but also the value of our properties. As we know right now, the value of our properties is not as good or as easy to resell our houses as they were before. All the different houses that face that property is, is very, very difficult to commercialize. I'm concerned also, not only about the everyday life, but also about the value of my property. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? If you will, sir, give us your name and...
Davey Hayes. I've owned this property about ten years, and there has been a dental office in that property or an illegal office for approximately twenty-five years, and now your home staff said it probably should have been commercial. It was rezoned without my consent to residential, when it has, should have been grandfathered in as, like, commercial or RO. So I think a property owner has some individual rights, and the city does not consider those rights at some time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission. Before we go into comment, okay, one of the things I wanted to address was somebody commented about boarding and future expansion or whatever, et cetera, and so staff, if you don't mind verifying, if there's any change in this business whatsoever, whether they go to boarding or expanding of the business, because it is one point, whatever, acres or whatever, all that would have to come back before the commission because that's a change in the conditional use. Is that correct?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chair. You know, we would have to become aware of that, but I, in this case, don't think that would be an issue. Seems that we would probably be notified of that pretty quickly, but you're, you are correct.
Okay. And, and then somebody asked about the application, it had to be submitted by the property owner. I don't think that's the case either, it just has to be okayed by the property owner.
That is correct, and I'm, I'm sorry if I did not answer that. I did reply, I think I maybe had two questions that were, that were similar, and I did reply to one of those. Mr. Hayes has, he is signatory on, on the application. It is all, it is all legitimate and...
Okay. So the application provided is appropriate, then?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Chair. Just a moment. Be right back with you. Commissioner Montal.
Well, and kind of on that same note, reading through the emails that, that we got prior to the project being read, the word rezoning is used several times throughout these emails. This is not a rezone, correct? I mean, that's, what we're discussing is a use by right.
Well, no, it's a conditional use. It's certainly not a rezoning, though.
But it's not a rezoning, but it's, it's a conditional use. That's what I meant to say. I apologize. But that's, I just wanted to point that out, that this, this is in no way changing the use of the property per se, you know, as, as a typical rezoning would grant, so. Anyway, I'll listen to other comments.
Autry.
Reading through the emails that we just received, I guess the thing that sticks out to me is we're, we're all looking for a perfect neighborhood. You chose to purchase property at the lake, but now the lake has a problem because it has animals that make noises, which are presumably going to make these dogs in the process of being groomed bark and go crazy and so on and so forth. There was an issue about the church school being there. Well, that's part of living in a city environment. You mentioned 1.32 acres and eighteen hundred square feet, with the assumption that it's going to be a pack of wild dogs after this lady spends hours, and a lot of people spend a lot of money to have a dog groomed, she's just going to let them go and say, okay, go bark, because there's a lot of stuff out here at the lake that you can bark at. It's not going to be allowed to be, as stated, a boarding situation or a pet care facility or anything else. Endless barking, if you can go into the pet stores where they, they do the grooming, I don't have my dogs groomed, but I have been to a lot of pet stores, and I hear basically very little or zero barking. So yes, we'd all like to live in a, in a perfect environment. I live down from Woodland Junior High School. I have dogs barking. I have kids going up and down the street. Hey, we're, it's where we choose to live in the city of Fayetteville, and those things come along with the territory. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chester.
I move that we approve CUP fourteen dash four eight one zero with staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Chester and a second by Commissioner Autry.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to propose the amendment.
I'd like to propose the amendment to the motion to add one condition of approval that when, if there are expansions to the conditional use, that the local POAs are notified.
Is that something we can make as part of this conditional use permit?
Oh, you possibly could, but I think if you're going to do something like that, you should name the POA and give the address that you want it to, the notification to go to.
Well, I'll name Candlewood and...
Candle Shoe.
Candle Shoe.
Candle Shoe.
And what's the other one?
Uh...
Barrington.
No, it's...
Crystal Cove.
Crystal Cove.
Candle Shoe.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Just a moment, please. So, that is appropriate for us to include in somebody's conditional use for that?
Well, you're given wide discretion when you're doing a conditional use. Normally, our conditional use, you know, has its own notification, but I think it would not be illegal to add an additional condition to this one if you felt like it was warranted. Obviously, there was, it was successful this time to notify them.
I guess my question is, is what does the code provide?
Mr. Chair.
I mean, does the code provide...
It's a sign, be placed...
Well, I'm talking about notify property owners of adjacent one hundred feet or what have you. I mean, I guess if they came back through, I guess my question is if they came back through wanting to alter this or change it or what have you, you could request at that time for them to notify the other property owners. I know we've done that before.
Right, so they can't, for this application, they're not required to.
Right.
But if this application were approved by the commission and this condition of approval were added, if this same applicant comes back in and decides to change their application, then at that point, we could require the applicant to not only meet the minimum of the city code, which is required the adjoining property owners, adjoining parcels, they would also have to notify the two POAs notified here if they happened to still be in existence at that time.
That's only this owner, this enterprise, right?
Only for this conditional use.
Okay, okay.
It seems like, you know, I mean, those are one solid request from the neighbors that, you know, I could point out and say, oh, yeah, we can do that.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chester.
I disagree that most of the people on this list are actually neighbors. They're nine hundred feet away, so I'd like to either vote on that amendment or I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Oh, you don't have, that amendment needs to be seconded, then you would vote on the amendment.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
Okay.
And the first vote will be for the amendment.
All right.
So, yes to approve the amendment, no to...
Either approve or deny the amendment before you get to the underlying motion.
So, the vote is going to be to approve the amendment to add an additional condition of approval.
That's correct.
Stating that if any changes are made to the business or expansion thereof, the Candle Shoe neighborhood and Crystal Cove will also be notified.
The property owners association would be notified.
Okay. Mr. Garner.
Hoskins?
No.
Chester?
No.
Honcho?
No.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
No.
Noble?
Yes.
Selby?
No.
Autry?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay. All right.
Now, we're back to the original motions to approve by Commissioner Chester.
Okay. And so, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Chester and a second by Commissioner Autry. That's right. Okay. Mr. Garner.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
Honcho?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Selby?
No.
Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now with that, even though the amendment did not pass, I would expect that if the business did come in wanting to make some alterations or changes or whatever at that time, staff would visit with the applicant about notifying the adjacent property owners. Okay? Right? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your understanding. Okay. All right, so I think that was the last item on the agenda. As far as any other business, we've got subdivision committee this Thursday, and it is team.
You guys now raise your hands if you know.
Okay. Just want to make sure everybody knows. Okay, and that begins at nine a.m. Thank you all, have a good week.